Be the second fastest meeting in history. Six thirty, uh, we'll go ahead and recording started, go ahead and call it Ruder. Tom, would you please call roll?
And, yep, Eisenbrow.
Yeah.
Clarion Zoom.
Zoom.
He Richardson.
Yeah.
Snodgrass, not yet, Still Smith.
Yeah.
Patty, she gonna be here?
Yep, that's right.
Uh, Molly, got you.
Okay, everybody get a chance to look at the minutes from the fifteenth meeting? You know, I did, I did not see anything. If nobody has any additions or changes, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to accept the minutes.
Have a motion to accept the minutes as presented, we have a second.
Second.
Motion second on favor, I.
Alright.
All pose same sign. Alright, um, I'm gonna start real quick, I, I think one of the things we, as, as, as a group, we've come a long way. Uh, we've got a lot done. There are some issues and, and Bruce, I'm glad you're on here because I was wondering, could, could the infrastructure, did, have you guys done much with roads and any of the, any of that? Stuff?
So, we have, uh, attended some of the transportation, uh, meetings, uh, with Delaware County. We did have Ron Maddox, who I haven't talked to, he retired about a month ago. And he was our key person be, uh, on those, so I got to follow up with him to see if he's still helping with, uh, you know, what's going on in Licking County and others, but he was very plugged in, but outside of attending, you know, via conference called, uh, Delaware County Transportation Meetings, uh, I haven't, we haven't done anything beyond that. At this point.
I, I, I guess, I know, cause I know you guys have been meeting up and I apologize, I wasn't able to be there when you guys went down and met with Beth about the AEP. Uh, I know Tom and I have talked and discussed the fact, I think, like to set up one more meeting to try to see where we can go, because after looking at their maps, uh, I, I think there's a solution and an answer that I'd like to run by them with my, my history and my, I don't hate to use the term expertise, but with my history and stuff that I think that, I, I, I logically, I don't understand why they can't do what my idea is. Uh, and then as far I know, Sewers seems to be uh, spinning our wheels maybe a little bit, we've got some good answers, but I, I, I'm just wondering if we can maybe start focusing and try to get some, some things nailed down or more direction as far as the roads and the, that part of the infrastructure. Maybe focus attention there.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I'll, I'll pick that back up and follow up with Ron to see if he's still planning to help us on the roadside and be engaged with that, cause if not, we'll have to, I'll have to figure out how I can get some more coverage done, but, but I think after our meetings last week, uh, I'll be sending out to the committee, my version of the notes summarizing some things from, you know, Tom and Jim who attended, that'll add more clarity to how the meetings went, but I think we made a lot of progress and certainly the doors open to set up additional meetings.
Absolutely, no, I agree, and I mean, and I, I'm just wondering too, I, I'm, I think things are gonna start, seem to be, appear to be starting to move rather fast with some of these developers and that kind of stuff, and I just wanna make sure also that if, if, if we have some resources possibly freed up that Jim could use if he needs some additional help too. So, and, and we can work, work our groups together and just make sure that we're, we're moving that way, cause I know the developers, I just, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a single little five acre owner, I already, a group of us got phone calls this past week, so, I mean, they're even stepping out to five acre people, so. I think we need to keep an eye on that.
Uh, Molly, do you know if, if, sorry.
Oh, good, Molly, okay.
Um, do you know if Holly is still going to the Licking Transportation Improvement District meetings?
Um, I'm, I don't know if I'm sure if he's, him or no, but I'm trying to.
I think she has been.
Go ahead.
I would assume.
Oh, okay. I didn't mean to step on you there, Bruce, sorry. Uh, due to the fact of the zoning commissions meeting, it's at seven thirty, we are gonna condense this down really, we're gonna try to be out of here no later than seven fifteen and be off Zoom, so. Uh, basically, is there any other topics or anything that anybody, that the, you guys need, we need to start looking towards? Thinking about?
Oh. Well, we talked a little bit actually when we got together on, uh, I guess, at the, the picnic, but the idea of somehow starting to reach out to the schools. So. I think Holly, Holly has some ideas on the best approach for that, so I guess we've got another meeting in two weeks, so I think we can table it until she's here.
Okay.
For that discussion. But it, it's, we have enough sort of solid stuff between our written materials, what's on the website, to, you know, not go into school board meetings, but go in and sitting down with a select couple of people and start saying, alright, given what's going on, what are your thoughts about Harlem Township and supporting the needs that we're gonna have, so.
I, I think that's an excellent idea, I think if we go to the school, you know, I, I, I wanna make sure the school even, I, I wonder sometimes, I wanna make sure they know that what could potentially hit Harlem Township in the next, you know, two, three years, just in number of residents.
Well, I think that'd be one reason to start the process.
Yeah, exactly, I think it's a good idea.
We, we learn a little bit if they're really, to the degree they're even thinking about it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I think that's an excellent idea, so we'll, we'll just kinda put that off until our meeting in two weeks.
I think I quoted, have said that I would be happy to help lead that activity.
I seem to remember being that way, I think.
I thought so, yeah.
Oh, we, we all thought so.
That was gonna come up at some point.
Well, I, you know, I didn't say anything, I just assumed from what you were saying that you were leading that, so.
Yeah, okay, right.
You're quite welcome, sir. Alright, uh, we'll go ahead and move into the subcommittees unless there's anything else, and that just kinda opened. Jim?
Um. I think Jim wanted me to go first.
Yeah, I want, I was just gonna say that, I wanted Tom to go first. Then you need to put Tom's name on the top of the sheet then.
I didn't do it.
No?
Okay, Tom.
Um, so Bruce gave me his report, which we're gonna read into the record as soon as I can find this in this file. Um, so, um, we had two meetings last week, uh, one in Beth Leir's office with staff of AEP and one in Tiffany Mag's office with two of her staff people, Tiffany Mag's is with the sewer district. And, um, and the, the meeting with Beth Leir was with AEP. Um, so, um, eight twenty-nine twenty-three with Ohio River Representative Beth Leir and AEP summary great meeting that provides Harlem Township with direct contacts at AEP that we've been trying to get to. Uh, so we had uh, one of their siding engineers, uh, three of their government affairs people, uh, one of their right of way people who's under subcontract, um, an attorney and, uh, what's that, two, three? And their, uh, public relations person who's our point person. Uh, but I got an email back from you today saying, great meeting. If there's anything else you on your mind, get ahold of me. So, so I'm gonna put, ask for a meeting in New Albany at Transco's office uh, with you and just to talk about it. And how much we don't, how much could be, how much could be improved? So, that's part of AEP. Um, there were about eleven people in attendance, including myself and Bruce. Uh, contact information for all attendees was provided by Zach, uh, from here at AEP and distributed by, um, Legislative Assistant Lydia, uh, Hossevar. So we have all their names and email addresses and direct phone numbers. Um, AEP came prepared with, uh, Harlem Township Overlay Zoning. Um, we shared the latest, uh, post county line road, uh, overlay. Um, and Tom agreed to send this information to AEP for their review, and that's what we've been done. AEP provided their latest version of transmission line, line possibilities, which is um, a much, uh, reduced version of their first map, nothing, there's nothing on that map that wasn't on the first map, but a lot of it's been cleared away. Uh, and there's one clear modern path through Trenton and down through, uh, Monroe Township, bypasses the township entirely. And then this one that goes diagonally across, or actually two or three that go diagonally across the township from the northwest corner down to the, uh, this.
This makes no sense at all.
Uh, so I took that second map and I plotted that out on one of our parcel maps just to see how many parcels will be affected, and I've got that with me, but I don't think we'll have time to look at it today. Um, AEP provided their newest version of transmission line possibilities that had been leased the day before the meeting. Um, Tom shared maps of Harlem Township and emphasized how important it is to to do everything possible to have lone lines go by parcel boundaries so that the property values are not jeopardized. Um, all understood the increased value of land in the township. Uh, we also discussed the new CLR overlay and needing additional power for the industrial commercial activities we expect to get in this area. Uh, Tom indicated a substation would be needed, yes, AEP for their assistance in getting that done. AEP indicated they would need specifics on what load would be required in that area so that AEP development could determine what would be needed, and we said we would provide that when uh, that information becomes available, that's really through, through Jim's team.
Yeah, well, that, that's, okay. I, I, I've got an answer for him, yeah.
No, there you go.
A whole bunch, I mean, you can't, you, you, you. The, the, the comment that they made to me one time was that, that they don't work on speculation. So, there you go, we can't speculate what we're gonna go, get up there, we can just get a rough idea of what we think might be up there.
And, and, and it's, it's not surprising, but we got the same request from the sewer division, except not in terms of anticipated load, but in terms of anticipated assets. Cause they're looking at the flow of sewage. So, everybody's looking for the same kind of information. What's the load? Um, I'm confident AEP is clear on our request about transmission line, they indicated they're in the process of conducting interviews with property owners about right of way requests. Uh, they indicated, uh, in something there, um, apparently the, uh, the attorney said that there's such a thing as right of entry. So that a utility does not really have to ask permission.
They don't, yeah.
But to be good neighbors, they do, and then if you turn them down, they go anywhere. But I had not heard that before.
The best, the best thing, best thing you can do, and, and they're again dealing with them and I can, but playing hardball with them, you are going to strike out. It's that simple. You know, so if you at least, I don't wanna say give into them, but cooperation with them, a lot of times will go a lot farther.
Yeah, and if we can do that and they can give a little, uh, they indicated it would be helpful if Harlem Township would support the interview effort with owners, but we told them you would not be able to do that. AEP shared that the towers would need a hundred and fifty foot car derisment, which we knew, and the spans are typically one thousand to twelve hundred feet apart. So. Uh, so that's roughly a clack to a mile. Uh, we provided Mike Cannon's information as a key contact for township. Um, Ms. Lear suggested another meeting after Harlem Township reviews the latest AEP options. Which we're doing, yeah. Either in New Albany or wherever, and she also wanted to be updated on any future meetings and also any public inquiries or complaints that occurred. Uh, AEP offered to attend any meetings that Harlem Township sponsors, including township-wide communication meetings. So, that's the meeting with AEP. Uh, then Bruce's notes on the meeting with the sewer district. So, um, attendees were Tiffany Mag, Mason Jancheck, engineer, Kelly Teal, another engineer, and Monica Conners from Economic Development. Uh, myself, Jim and Bruce. Um, another great meeting, Tiffany's team was very open and helpful about how we can work together. Their early projected routes matched what Harlem Township thought would work well. And I think really striking thing, we had a map on the table. Um, and Mason's finger went right to uh, space between Harlem and Millwall. Right, or we, right, right in the crease between the property lines. Pretty much where the power line is, but. So, we're thinking along the same lines in terms of how the sewer gets into the township. Um, lots of collaboration, uh, Tiffany indicated um, that holding tanks can be used, and I'll let Jim fill that, fill in the details of that, let's see what's, with his question. Anything under five thousand gallons a day, Ohio EPA doesn't care. So if they're. Um, Tiffany said the sewer capacity the county is getting from Columbus is four million gallons a day. And her calculation was about two hundred and ninety gallons per household. So that's roughly a little under fourteen thousand for the, for the capacity, which is a lot less than we had calculated based on four per.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we were looking at thirty-two to thirty-six thousand, this is now down to fourteen. And this means that it's hookups to the sewer, so the township population could be twenty or more, depending on how, how many septic system. It's still about half of what we were anticipating. But that was an interesting calculation, four million gallons, two hundred and eighty gallons per household. Um, Columbus is creating the drop shaft that Delaware County will use, so the drop shaft is what goes down that big pit, after all the tunneling is done, after they get the machine up and out, then they put down this big, I don't know, six, eight foot diameter shaft, and basically that's the connection into the sewer system. Um, tap credits will be provided to developers since the close sizing will be more than that, that would would be needed. Uh, their longest stretch today is four miles. Um, with, um, I, I think that was forced sewer lines for the pump station. Is that right, Jim? No? Was that?
Those, that's gravity flow.
Okay. So, four miles, you can get probably up to Center Village and not much further than that, but um, Tiffany said the new capacity size that about fourteen thousand homes, so capacity should not be an issue. In the northwest quadrant, Tiffany mentioned a pump station near Keller Plains could service the area. So instead of being hooked into a uh, package plant, they would put a pump station and connect it into the furthest extent of the gravity fed line, somewhere around Duncan Run.
I'll take that, to take that area off of its package plant.
Yeah, yeah, and also to reduce any.
So they're really wanting to get off the package plants.
They want, they want.
Well, they want, yeah, excuse me.
Yeah.
They wanna service that northwest quadrant close to Galena.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, we asked about any possibility of Delaware's, uh, county allowing Columbus, Galena or Lincoln County sewer to provide services to Harlem Township? No. Um, the county has no reason to allow that to happen. So, they want, they wanna be our supplier of sewers. So, hmm, they wanted, um, Tiffany said the two thousand seventeen, um, county master plan is still in effect, and we have a copy of that. Uh, the CR, the CLR overlay needs to be added to the twenty seventeen master plan. Uh, we gave them a copy of the overlay maps, uh, to work with. Uh, we discussed package plants, um. The thought is that EPA would probably not approve anything close to where sewers will be coming. Um, and other requests would need to maintain the plant and other requirements to tap into sewers not available and decommissioning plant. Um, Tiffany also indicated pump stations need at least a year for installations. Um,
She used to, did she use the term pump station or lift station? I think they were interchangeable.
I think they're.
They're using as an interchange, okay.
And I think she said pump.
Okay, she did, my note said pump.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, uh, we talked about, um, next steps were for Jim to provide Tiffany's team, uh, with the parcels in the township that are most likely to be developed quickly so that we can use that to develop, uh, the spider web for the, the sewer, the sewer feed lines. And, uh, Monica asked that we keep her informed, um, as it goes through, as the CLR overlay goes through the zoning process and, uh, that was about it. But two very, um, interesting and I think productive meetings. We're not getting the, yes, yes, yes.
Right, no, they, they finally know.
Did you get? Did you get the sense that, you know, ahead of Columbus having the hole done and the pipe down, they were gonna do anything in advance to start, you know, bringing a, you know, pipe our way? I, I guess they can't really until they see the development plan starting to take shape, right, I mean, it's kinda one or the other, I guess, cart before the horse, but.
I, we didn't ask that question specifically, and I don't know if they're ready to, uh, to really do that. I think they wanna see some, some sign of, of residential or commercial development before they start. But we can have a good idea of where the piping would go, so we don't have to start from scratch. Anyway, that's the infrastructure. Thank you. If I got any questions? Uh, Jim?
No, buddy. Uh, to add on to that, uh, actually, the meeting went, with sewer went very, very, very well. Um, based on answers we'd been given before and what answers we got there, uh, I was just tickled to death. Tickle to death, uh, from the developer's standpoint. So, in talking to some of the landowners and developers, uh, I'm waiting for them to, actually, we're getting down to the nitty gritty on the people that we already know. Uh, that mean there's not somebody out there that we don't know, uh, on, uh, getting down to the plots that are under contract, wanna be under contract, blah, 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 to get this map to the sewer department, so they can see where the concentration is most likely to happen and then go off from that. Um, I was in meetings today, two developers did call me back, I gotta get back to them. And, uh, once I get that drawn up, then I'll get it up to, uh, the sewer department. And I think the meeting after that then will be very informative as to uh, where it might go. Um, this will be depending on how far they come off of that shaft, this will be developer-driven. So, I will have to take Holly and a couple of the large developers with me when we start going up, dealing with them. Um, because it's gonna take a lot of money. And the county is not gonna foot all the bill or any of the bills, as far as that goes.
But I did get the sense that they're willing to buy in upfront to get it started as long as they understand where the return's gonna be.
Uh, okay, so what that means, Tom, is that if a developer says, I'm starting here, uh, in other words, he, he can prove that he really is doing it, okay? They know that he's going to float a bond or whatever to pay for it, they might be willing to get started, but they have to have proof. In other words, it's, but yeah, they might, at, at that point, but they're not paying for it. So. Yeah, at the end of the day, they're not paying for it, but if, if a developer or group developers, whatever, at this point, we don't know what the proof is. But yeah, they, they may get started, uh, cause it is a long process to get the, the land and that type of thing, so, uh, but there again, um, very good meeting, um, on the, uh, holding tanks. Um, so anything five gallon, five gallons, five thousand gallons or more uh, is EPA controlled. Under five thousand gallons, it falls back to, uh, Delaware County Health Department. Which, for what we're concerned about is good. And for that, uh, we would then have to go to the health department and talk to them, and the sewer commission has no objections. Because what happens is, once the sewer gets there, they're gonna have to tap into the sewer. So if there's a holding tank there while they're waiting on sewer, sewer department doesn't have a problem, so we have their blessing. And so what we need to do is if we get a project, is then go to the health department and say, hey, this is temporary till the sewer gets there. Um, and work it out with them and do whatever we gotta do with them, so. To me, that was, uh, somewhat good news. Uh, that there is for a medium-sized or smaller business waiting. Um, I think that's good news to help them get, get started. Um, the credits on the taps, uh, for anybody listening, they said possible. You gotta watch them. They say possible credit taps, because they, they're not, they don't wanna stick, stick that out um, there and everybody have their hands out. So, uh, but basically Tom hit everything on the head, it was a good meeting. Uh, again, I think, uh, in talking to some of the developers, they're happy. Uh, things are starting to move forward, and it's not just hearsay anymore. And, uh, then on to, uh, the development, uh, committee, uh, still massive push for housing, as we all know, and it's getting worse. It's not gonna go away, it is slowed down a little bit by the higher interest rates. But the developers and the builders are figuring out ways to deal with that, just like they did back um, in the, in the two thousand, I don't know, six, seven, eight, where they did buy downs and that type of thing. Um, so, I noticed on the for sale sites, um, if you go, you can go to realer.com or Zillow, actually Realtor has more than Zillow on it. Everybody thinks it's Zillow, but realer.com's got more on it. Um, there's nothing hardly for sale that's existing. There's just, there's a few, but compared to what it used to be, there's hardly anything in our zip codes surrounding Harlem Township. You go to other areas and they got a lot for sale. This is a hot area, everybody's moving, you know, wants to be near, uh, Intel and that type of thing, a lot of, uh, a lot of interest. Uh, we have at some point a meeting with, uh, attorney Caleb Bell who came and talked to us. Uh, we're gonna talk about all the, uh, alphabet stuff like JEDs, TIFs, NCA's, et cetera. Uh, I think that'll be really interesting. And, uh, basically, uh, that's the end. There's lots of phone calls, Mike gets lots of phone calls.
Tom, something you said, I just, I've just been sitting here milling it in my head. She said a four mile run was the max that they, right now? That's interesting, because she sat in here. She sat in here and said that, that, that that could service the entire township.
I think with the pumping station, it can.
Yeah, I think for, if it, if it's, if it's just gravity feed, I don't think they go past.
No, she, what she, what we were talking about, to clarify, there again, I don't know how far ago, Carl. Well, to clarify, so we were trying to get, and you, and everybody has to understand that this is just um, strategizing. In other words, this isn't written in stone, so we were strategizing how to get uh, sewer up to the northwest and the northeast corners. And, uh, she said that a pump station would make it quicker to get the sewer there. That if we waited for gravity feed.
Okay, with four miles.
Yeah.
Okay.
So because of all the construction and this and that and this and that, for some reason, we can get it done sooner if we go with the pump station.
Four miles, and that, that thing's a hundred and sixty some feet down, that's what it just seemed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
You don't need that.
Yeah, no, I think, I think the whole scenario was to, those two corners was to use a pump station because it would get done sooner.
But it would still have to tie in at some point to the gravity feeds.
Right, right, but the one that's already, yeah, right.
Alrighty, uh, Alrighty, uh. Molly?
Uh, the only thing I really have, um, is that. Probably in our next uh, regular meeting, we ought to consider setting up and planning for the next round of community update meetings. I think it's been long enough, our last ones was, you know, in January, early February. Um, we've got several of these overlay districts now, and I, I feel like the community is probably ready for. Another update and reminder of what's coming our way and what we're doing to plan for it, so. That's really all I have, I'm continuing to put out emails to remind people of these kind of major. Uh. Process points, you know, like, like last week or, yeah, last week's hearing and then the continuation today. Um, if whenever it moves to trustees, I'll probably put out another email for that one, so kind of like the majors. Um, milestones of, of, you know, this overlay and any of your future overlays, um, I'll continue to. Use the email distribution list to, to get it out to as many people as we can. Um, and obviously, we've got some upcoming, upcoming edits to the website that we'll be looking at in the future, but. That's just my two senses to, at our next meeting two weeks from now, we probably have to come up with a plan, maybe some dates and topics of what we wanna. Together for our next community meetings.
Uh, on that. I'm checking my calendar. Because we got, the committees are doing some stuff. That when you're thinking about that, and I know you'll be thinking about it ahead of time, that um. We have the attorney that we're gonna be working on talking about. Possible uh, goodies and. I think, uh. We'll have some more infrastructure stuff, uh, probably towards late fall. That type of thing, so if maybe we wait, we can plan, cause it's gonna take some.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not thinking like trying to do them in like, you know, end up.
No, I'm trying to give you an idea, so if, if we've got uh, some good meetings going. And uh, we can get back to the sewer, and we can get back to AEP. And all these things, so we'll sort of watch, what I'm saying is sort of watch how these are going. And then when we have our meeting, we'll actually have some meat and potatoes to go over.
It would help, I think, to check with holiday, see what you're skipping.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, but I, I would think. No, but, but I would think, well, there's Molly, she can do the meetings. But I, I would think that, yeah, as it was said, it's probably gonna be late fall and uh, or later. But as we start getting meat and potatoes, maybe we can keep that in mind that that's gonna be in a. You know, we got some goodies for the public, so I thi- I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, a- a- and if it ends up being late fall, or I, I mean hypothetically, if. If we decide to wait until we get to enough, you know, different milestones and it ends up being in January again, I mean, that's a year from the previous community updates. So if, if we're pushing into December, we might wanna just.
Yeah, December's rough because of the holidays, is that what you're thinking?
That's what I'm saying, like, if we get, if we get too close into like November, December, I feel like with, like you said, with holidays and stuff, we might as well just, you know. Be, be good to try to do January, the same as we did last year.
We didn't have any trouble with attendance based on.
Yeah.
That time of the year, so. Yeah, well, it'd be nice to be able to say whatever the decision on AEP is, it would be nice to say. Uh, we talked to sewer, and this is a preliminary route. Uh, we talked to roads, and these are preliminary routes. Uh, maybe have more timeline on the roundabouts, cause everybody's concerned about, you know, wants to know about the roundabouts. So, yeah, I think there's a lot of things that, as we start to get answers and we're working all towards that. That I think it could be really good informational.
Yeah, uh, so I, I wouldn't wanna push it any, like, more than a year beyond last.
Well, I mean, we're gonna have our overlays, and I'm just trying to get more meat into the meeting, if we don't have it, we don't have it. But I'm hoping we do.
No, I would hope so too.
I think, I think, I think having that is a good idea, Jim.
Yeah.
Do you think one afternoon, the one evening is about? We don't wanna do.
I don't think we need to do ten again, I mean, we did the ten the first time because it was. It was focused specifically on the different areas that we had kind of identified, but now, I, I think that's, I think we kind of covered that enough, we don't need.
So you don't, don't know that, don't know that we could just do one big meeting?
Well. Yeah, I guess we could, I mean, some people work evenings and can't get to it.
Or two? Do an afternoon and evening again?
I think having the option of two might be nice, but yeah, we certainly don't need ten.
Are we gonna do something like, for example, maybe at the church again?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think would be, if we do fewer meetings, I think it would have to be a bigger facility, just because. I mean, you saw how half these rooms were.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we had twenty-five, we had thirty people every meeting, minimum, I mean, on average.
But I mean, yeah, if we can get out and put it on a screen and here's your overlays, and here's this, and here's that, and. I mean, just give him a, give them all a good, uh. You know, education on what's been going on and everything that they'll go into the new year knowing.
Idea, we, we needed to start discussing that.
I think it's also gonna depend on what we got to share with them too.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
Maybe a little bit more.
I, but I think people will be interested kind of regardless, I mean, they're, they're.
How many and where we're gonna have to do it?
Given the email list now, and it's just a general knowledge people in the community have. Yeah, I wouldn't be so, I mean, the first church meeting we had at what, a hundred and forty? I mean, it wouldn't surprise me if we were over two hundred twice.
Yeah, that's true.
So. Well, that's why I wanted to have something more tangible.
Right.
You know, that way, uh, we've got something to tell them so that they understand, so it's. It's more us telling them than having to get a whole bunch of questions that we don't have answers to, so.
Molly, did you have anything to add to that?
No.
Just continuing talking about that soup.
Alphabet soup, yep, yay.
Yeah, uh, I know I wrote.
Alrighty, um. Anything else, group? Anything public wise? I knew there was something else I wanted to bring up and. Memory, what a terrible thing to waste. Seventies were terrible. All right, well, we don't have anything else. Nothing from out in the Zoom land, I would entertain a motion.
I so move.
Motion to.
Adjourn?
Adjourn, uh, second.
I'll second it.
On favor, I.
Hi.
Same sign, thank you.
Thank you.